15. As a preliminary matter, this is Jean McKnight, board chair. And permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members of the board, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ted Owens.
Here.
Marty Jacobs.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Okay, and staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lee Newman.
Here.
And Alexandra Cle.
I'm here.
And Clay Hutchinson is also with us from the department to provide us with technical support. And then we have persons who are going to be presenting and speaking on items on the agenda. And when I call your name, also note that you are present. George Jenta Jr.
Present.
And Michael Tadoldi.
Present.
And they are expected to speak about, excuse me, I'm looking for the address, 15 and 17 Oak Street in Needham. And Evans Huber.
Present.
And Evans, you are speaking or might have something to say about the town meeting, the special town meeting?
No, no.
You're here primarily.
I'm here in connection, I represent Century Bank, which is
Century Bank, right.
Going to be hoping to put in a facility in the Anton's building at 1433 Highland.
Yes, and that will be at the end of our agenda. All right, so those are the persons who are present. And I have a few words to say about the conduct of these, conduct of these remote meetings. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board and being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. And this order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting has no hearings on the agenda, so public participation is not required. And we do not expect to have public participation. So, and for this meeting, the planning board is convening by Zoom app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. And please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are, all attendees actually are participating by video conference. And accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer unless that is part of the agenda. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. And I think, let me ask on with regard to the planning directors' report at the end of the meeting where the Century Bank will be mentioned and the property on Highland Avenue, 225 Highland Avenue. Is those materials on our website? I know they were only provided to Wesley.
Yes, yes, it's been updated and they've been uploaded.
Okay, thank you. All right, and the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. I expect we will follow our agenda tonight. We will soon turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members of the planning board inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response that you wish to make to something that some other person or member said, wait until the chair, years of floor to you, and again, state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So, at this time, we will move to, oh, excuse me, one more thing, and this has been customary for our Zoom meetings. We entertain, will entertain a motion to continue this meeting to October 6, 2020 at 7:15 PM with the same Zoom ID. If any technical difficulty arises that keeps the planning board from completing this minute meeting tonight, do I have such a motion?
So moved.
The motion is made by Adam Block. Do I have a second? Mr. Jacobs looks like he wants to second, but he's muted.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I second the motion.
And Mr. Jacobs seconds the motion, and so we'll do the roll call on this motion. Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Block.
Hi.
Mr. Alpert.
Hi.
All right, so we have that taken care of. And so the first item on our agenda is the request to discuss changes to the approved plan as well as to discuss a request for temporary occupancy permit. And the permit in question is amendment to major project site plan special permit number 201601 for the property owned by, let's see, excuse me, 57 Dedham Avenue LLC, who is the petitioner, and the property is located at 15 and 17 Oak Street in Needham, Massachusetts. And I understand that attorney, George Jenta Jr., will speak about this and perhaps also Mr. Tadoldi, the principal of the developer LLC. Mr. Jenta.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So, as indicated, this is where before you this evening in connection with a pending request for temporary occupancy. And I can't remember, I think everybody other than Adam was on the board, so you all should likely recall, or maybe Ted might not have been either. But the, this is a project that was originally approved, 12,000 and change square foot mixed-use building. It's a building that has commercial use on the first floor, targeted for medical office, and then five residential units above on the second floor and a half-story above the second floor. Originally, the project was approved basically with sort of a basic building. And then the planning board amended the bylaw, went through town meeting, amended the bylaw, so that underground parking was feasible, and we came back and got approval for basically 30-some-odd underground parking spaces to make the site work a lot better, make it a much more attractive site and so on. So that was all approved. We had to come in, we got an extension on the permit, and shortly after the extension was granted, Mike began work on the project. It is nearly complete. The building itself is complete. The site infrastructure is essentially done. There's still some little bits, odd things to be done. Most notably, there's some of the landscaping still needs to be put in. And when I was out there today, I noticed the front steps were in, but the handicap ramp on the front of the building hadn't yet been installed. So there's a few minor little things, but all the major substantive things have been done. However, as a part of the construction, there were a couple of deviations. And at this point, I'd like to share my screen because it'll probably be, make more sense and be easier to show them to you doing it that way.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jenta.
Okay. All right, so this is the, this is the approved plan, and you can see the building here. And there's, there were 13 parking spaces sort of behind the building. Driveway comes in and wraps around, and then the access to the underground garage is here. As a part of this original approved plan, there was a proposed transformer here at the right front corner of the property, you know, right, basically, right in front of the building, right up against the property line. This was chosen, we thought this made a lot of aesthetic sense, it was accessible. It was part of, you know, it was sort of a spot that we thought really kind of, for multiple reasons, worked. Unfortunately, during construction, N-Star, in their imminent wisdom, completely and utterly disagreed and basically told Mike, no, you're not going to have the transformer there. We're going to put the transformer over here on the other side. So the major, really the largest deviation that were before you to discuss tonight is the fact that N-Star basically put the transformer in on the other side. I'll show you that in a minute on the, on the ASBIL plan. As a part of it, they also required a pole. We had hoped to run the electrical underground from the service across the street, and we were going to try and run the electrical underground over to the transformer, but again, N-Star decided they didn't want that, they weren't going to allow that. So they actually had us put in a pole on our side of the street, and electric service is going to come across the street to the, to the new pole. And one other minor thing I want to just show you on this plan before I go to the ASBIL is, I said there's, there were 13 spaces in the back of the building that were approved. Currently, today, there's 14 spaces. And the reason for that is this section right here, these three spaces were reconfigured a bit. So this original design had a sidewalk that went all the way here and all the way out to the front. That has been removed so that the spaces now start right up against the building. This little bubble here was also removed. So as you will see, as you will see, we now have, instead of the three spaces, there's four spaces here. So now I want to go back to that photo I just had up briefly to show you. So this is the area where the transformer was originally supposed to be. Right, sort of, right smack in sort of the front corner of the building. It would have been fairly visible, there would have been some, some small landscaping, but because of the location, it wouldn't have been a ton, so it would definitely would have been visible and noticeable. As I indicated, N-Star has required us to put it, or they put it in here. Now, you'll know, originally transformer's supposed to be here, up close to the street. N-Star has set it back a bit further, which although, you know, the transformer is now over here in a more open area, because N-Star set it back, one thing we do have working for us is there's room to do plantings and screening to, to sort of make it look better and sort of hide it, as it were. You can also see here the pole. You know, black dot right there. So as I said, I was out there today, and I took a couple of pictures, and I just want to show those to you so you can maybe see a little better. All right, so this is the transformer here. You can see, Mike, Michael has already put in some arboritey to screen it. They're still, we're doing the final grading and whatnot in this area, so, so, you know, additional landscaping will be added there, but it can't be put in just yet. Again, a little closer view of the transformer. And so this is what I'm talking about. So there's a tree that's been planted here, see the transformer here behind the pole, but there's room here to add some landscaping to basically sort of shelter the, or hide the transformer from the street. But to give it a little context too, I went across the street, sort of across the tracks, and you can kind of see, if you're on Oak Street across, looking towards the building, you know, you've, you've got the railroad arm, you've got the tracks, you've got kind of this blasted-out area here, and there's the fence, the chain link fence that runs along the track, so you can't really, transformer doesn't stick out so much because there's so much sort of stuff going on already in that area. You really see it more from, from sort of the opposite side, and even there, and then you got the arboritey will screen it out. So while it's not in the location that we would have preferred, you know, fortunately, we were able to work with it and add landscaping to make it a bit more attractive and to shield it a bit and buffer it a bit. So, but because that's a deviation from the original plan, obviously, we need to have, have the board review that and approve that. And as we work through the details on the ASBIL plan, and we get the ASBIL plan finalized, because the transformer's in the new location, we need the board to sign off on that as a change on the ASBIL plan. So. Want to stop there, or should I go on to the temporary occupancy?
Well, why don't, why don't we start by talking about the change, the change in, changes in the plan? So I'll summarize to say that it's the relocation of the transformer, a different location for a utility pole to which the electric services will be brought. And of 14 spaces instead of 13 spaces in the rear. And also the elimination of a sidewalk that previously connected the rear to the front of the building. So those are the changes that are being discussed. I'd like to ask a question about, about changes. I would like to mention to the other board members that, you know, I often, usually do go to a site that's going to be on our agenda and take a look at the site before a meeting when we're discussing it. So I went over today to that site, but I didn't want to walk around without Mr. Tadoldi's permission, who was onsite. So he accompanied me both inside and outside the building. And I do, I do have a question. I was reviewing the decision. And perhaps I'll put this question just so that we have a complete list of the changes to Mr. Jenta. The decision says that the first floor, of course, there's a basement level that's parking, and then there's a first floor which is to be exclusively commercial or business. And then the second and third floors, which are to be exclusively residential. But I believe I saw, it didn't mean much to me at the time when I saw it, but when I reviewed the decision, I said, well, this seems to be a change. The second floor is partially commercial and partially residential. Is that correct?
Michael, do you want to take that one?
Apparently, I didn't pick up that, I'm sorry, this is Michael Tadoldi speaking. I didn't pick up that on the decision, but that's the plan that's always been in front of you. That's the way it's, so I just believe it was written incorrectly. We've always had half and half on the second floor. It's, you look at all the plans we've got, it's never deviated from that. It's, so, you know, maybe I should have done a better job reading the decision to see that all the language was correct, but I haven't changed from the plans that you have always had. Half the unit, half of the space on the second floor was commercial. And there were two apartments on the second floor, and then there were three apartments on the third floor. That's the way it's always been. That's, you look at all the plans, that's the way it's written up. So.
We'd have to, we, we, we weren't, we were provided with the decision, but not with all the old plans to review. And I don't, I don't mean to make an issue of this, I just thought if we're, if, if we're reviewing all of the changes to the site, and then this seems to be one. So we'd have to, I mean, if there's a discrepancy between the approved plans and the wording of the decision, we'd have to take that into consideration, but we don't have that information in front of us now. What are you, what do you, what is your response to that, Lee Newman?
I don't have access to the file right now, but my memory is, and I can't get access to the remotely because I'm, because I can't use Citrix to actually pull the file up. But I thought we did an amendment on this, Michael, to clarify that issue. Michael's correct. I think originally, it was supposed to be residential on the second floor in total and the half-story, and then it changed. And I thought we codified it in some kind of amendment, but I don't have access currently to the T-drive to actually pull up that decision.
Alex? I'm in the process of looking it up, and the amendment is, the amendment, actually, the way that we did it was that it completely replaced the first decision. And yes, it speaks to having commercial and residential on the second floor. So I don't know, maybe it's possible that the decision that, if you don't have the right decision, I will make sure you have the right decision.
All right, well, I'm glad we were able to clarify that issue, so that we already had dealt with that change. Okay. So we're going then to discuss the other changes that were just, that were presented tonight. So I'll call the board members and see if, in turn, if they have comments or questions. Mr. Owens.
I have, I have no questions, and I have no objections to the changes.
All right, Mr. Jacobs.
I would agree with Ted. I'm in the same place as Ted.
Okay, and Mr. Block?
You are muted.
I apologize, thank you. Every once in a while, I get stuck on mute. I, I have no comment, no questions. I don't know if it's appropriate or not to say, but I will, I, I think that the project looks excellent. I think it's a well-designed project. And I live in the area, walk past it fairly frequently, and certainly drive by it all the time. And it's, it looks like a great building.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Alpert?
Yeah, um, the only question that I have is about the removal of the sidewalk. There are 14 spaces above ground and 30 spaces underground. Who do you intend to be using the 14 above-ground spaces? I'm just, I'm just thinking that if the above-ground spaces for the, the, the patients of the medical offices that are in the building, I'm, I'm a little concerned, especially at night, that they don't have a sidewalk where there might be traffic there. But if they're all going to be underground in the 14 spaces for the residents of the, of the building, then I'm not as concerned. So if, if you could just explain that a little bit. Other than that, I think everything looks fine.
If I could address that, it's Michael Tadoldi. It's a good question, Paul, is good observation, but if you understand the flow of the building, the, the main entrance is in the rear with all the parking. And
Good.
The idea that somebody would park in the back and then come forward to the sidewalk or to the street side would probably be very, wouldn't make any sense. They probably didn't belong there to begin with. And it also, this is something George and I didn't talk about, and I didn't, and I don't mean to bring this up in, at this point, except the ramp in the front, we feel that it's superfluous and actually misleading to anybody that is handicapped, because if they came in that space, there's really nowhere for them to go. They can't access the elevator. The only thing that's there is stairs. And I would also propose to have that removed, so I can also do some additional landscaping as well. It's a building code issue, but clearly you have the jurisdiction over approving or disapproving that thought also. And that's the ramp off the front steps that runs from the center of the building to the, to the right corner of the property and out to the sidewalk. So as I said, it would be misleading to somebody that might be handicapped, somebody that would come in either on crutches or, or on a, in a wheelchair, to have them go all the way up there and find that there's nowhere for them to access the building. We invite everybody to come in to the backside of the building with handicap ramps and handrails and such, and that's where the elevator is, that's where the main lobby is. And that, I think, would be judicious of us to, to promote them going that way versus coming in the front of the building. The street side of the building, I should say.
Is, is that ramp required under the building code? Are you going to have problems with the, with the architectural access board and the building code and Dave Roach if we, if the planning board eliminates it?
It's not, because what I need to do is to have, as long as I have a fully compliant access in one portion of the building, I can have a secondary area with a rescue zone on the front steps. And the front steps would be, have been set up to accommodate that. I could put the ramp in if he ever said I had to. I just think it would be more eye appealing to everybody on the building, better landscaping, and again, to encourage somebody to come all the way up there for no reason. So it would be an egress only for first-floor tenant people. Nobody in a wheelchair could get to it any other way. So to me, it seems like it's, it's something that doesn't, it actually creates more of a problem than a, than a, than an aid to a handicapped person, and it also allows us to do a better job landscaping the building. And, and obviously, it provides, I have to meet the building code. This is not, I'm not asking you to approve something that I can't, I can't receive occupancy with, through the building code.
All right, that's a new change that wasn't listed before, so I want to make sure Mr. Owens and Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Block have an opportunity to comment on that change.
Let me ask you a question. Is Mr. Tadoldi asking that we remove anything in our decision that requires the ramp and then leave it to him to work it out for compliance with the building inspector? Is that what he has to do?
Do you want to answer that question about whether our decision by reference to the plan or otherwise requires that ramp?
There is no, I'm not asking
Muted.
I'm not asking you to supersede the building code. I'm, I'm offering this as an alternative, as an, I'm asking the planning board to allow me to remove it while I still need to comply with all building code regulations.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can't, we're not gonna, we don't have any authority to supersede building code regulations.
That's, that's why I'm saying you
What you are asking us to do is what? To change, it's our decision that requires it?
Yes. Not, not removing my obligation to the building code, only to the site plan as it is approved by the, by the planning board.
Yeah, I, I doubt, and I mean, I just kind of scanned the decision before I'm meeting, and I don't think there's anything in the words of our decision requiring And I don't think there's anything in the words of our decision requiring the handicap ramp, both in the front and in the back. But of course, our decision refers to the plans and any any change to the plans requires our approval. We haven't actually seen a change in the plan, however, pictured, so that we'd see what that area will look like. I mean, we can imagine if it has landscaping, what it will look like, but.
George has that front elevation in a picture. If he could bring that up again, please. Is George?
And I realize Paul, Mr. Albert wishes to be recognized. But let's see this plan and then I'll call in Mr. Albert. Do you have a plan to show us what is being asked for?
Well, I think. Michael, are you referring to the photo or to the the elevation drawing?
I think showing the photo might be the best way to show. And then we can look at the the ASG plan as well. I mean, we can look at all three. We have the the original proposed. We have a photo of the front, and we have the ASG that shows no ramp on.
Yep. Okay. So this isn't the full front, but it shows the part, the area in question. All right. So on the original approved plan, right behind the silver car at the edge of the the concrete landing here is where the ramp was going to start, and then it was going to go off in this direction to go to grade and then turn and come out to the sidewalk here. So you can see that this is the the area in question. And I think what Michael's saying is that visually, it would be better to have this all landscaped. If there's not a need under building code or ADA requirements for the for the ramp, then it would be better to have this landscaped instead.
And I have a question on the front. You have handicap parking in the rear. You have two spaces, I believe. But there's no handicap parking in this location.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And the sketch plan that was put up previously by Mr. Janta does show the handicap ramp. And that's.
Correct.
Right. But you see.
Showing it here.
Yes, that's exactly. So what we're being asked to do is eliminate that handicap ramp and instead have that landscaped in a similar manner to the landscaping around the building and other places or some along those lines. All right. So at this point, please let me recognize Mr. Albert, who's been waiting.
Thank you. So my suggestion on this issue is that the planning director consult with Dave Roach, the building inspector, about the building code and the ADA requirements. And if he if he tells us that pursuant to the building code and the ADA, the ramp is not needed in the front, then Mr. Mr. Tidoldi can come back to us for a minor modification to remove the ramp. That's how I would suggest we handle it. And I don't see why we can't go forward tonight with whatever else we can approve tonight, other other than this one change to the plan.
And you're reminding me, Paul, Mr. Albert, that how we're treating this tonight, this this was not advertised as a public hearing. So we are, in fact, treating the changes that are before us as a my as a I know we would want to vote on that, but as a minor modification is that that appears to be the case, right?
Yes, that we would be voting this as a de minimis change.
Yes. Right. So if if we seem to be going in that direction on the ramp, let's circle back to the other changes that are before us. Mr. Block? You're muted still.
I just have a question about about the ramp. Was the was the purpose for having a ramp on Oak Street originally to, excuse me, allow for people that may be coming by car and just getting dropped off for an apartment for an appointment in the medical offices and then getting picked up?
The purpose, it's Michael Tidoldi again speaking. It's a good question. We don't anticipate people being dropped off for any reason in the front, because again, effectively, as it as it is, the front door to the building, the main access, is in the rear of the building with the parking, with the turnaround capabilities for anybody that comes in to drop somebody off, they can circle back out. And again, if if somebody I feel like the ramp is misleading to somebody to say you can access the building fully if we put a ramp there. And there's no elevator there. There's no main lobby there. It's a very small landing area inside the building with stairs and only one door to the lower level of the commercial space. So they can't access the garage. They can't access the second or third floor from that space. So if somebody came in and thought this was the main entrance, because it's the front, in a wheelchair, they're going to be frustrated with the fact that they can't. They can't access anything. So the way the design of the building is set up, everything is brought in from a level platform in the rear with handicap fully handicap access, elevator, waiting lobby, so on. So we'd rather encourage everybody to come into that back location and use that front more as a as a as a fire exit or egress.
And Mr. Albert again.
Yes. So again, I would defer to Dave Roach on this. But it sounds to me like the Oak Street, the Oak Street entrance isn't really an entrance. It's more of an emergency egress situation. And I'm wondering whether in an emergency, if you have a handicapped person who would be going out of there in a wheelchair, whether they need to have the ramp there to get out of there in case of an emergency, if they're going out through that through that Oak Street door. But again, I I defer to Dave Roach. I would like to consult with him. And if he says it's okay, I'm okay with it. If he says, well, in case of an emergency, we need to have the ramp there because somebody in a wheelchair might might have to get out of that building in a hurry. You know, I leave it to him.
That's a good point. If I could say something, it's Michael Tidoldi.
Yes.
Under the ADA requirements in the building code, they allow for a rescue area. It has to be 30 inches by 48 inches minimum on the platform outside the building where you can place a wheelchair or somebody can sit and wait to be rescued out there. That's under the building code. And I would agree, if Dave disagrees with that, we'll put the ramp in. So but my interpretation of it, and I haven't broached with with Dave yet, but with this entry, obviously, I was going to talk to him. I just didn't want to have to leave this hanging. So if we can agree that if Dave agrees with it, we'll move it. If he wants it in, we'll keep it.
I have a I have a question. A nice thing about this building, and I want to say I agree with Adam Block on the the good quality architecture and the materials that we use in this building. It really is an enhancement to the neighborhood and to the town. But one of the things that makes it so so useful for medical offices is that it's very it's right right across the street, right across Chestnut Street from the hospital, essentially, just one half a block from it. And so I does. Once here in that front door, there's a there is a corridor. Is that right, Mr. Tidoldi, that would take a person from the front entrance to that lobby and the elevator in the rear? Is that correct?
That is correct. There won't be a main corridor that goes from the front to the back.
So if if there were an emergency, that person's on the first floor had to exit the building, how would they get from the rear of the building to the front if the rear was somehow involved in some catastrophe?
Well, that would the first floor will have full access. Everybody will have full access to the front, but it won't be handicap friendly from the second second floor up or the garage down, I mean, below the first floor. The first floor itself will have will if it's split into two units, it'll have two access to to the front lobby and to the rear lobby.
Okay, that's that's what I was asking. Yeah, I was imagining somehow there was a barrier that would prevent, you know, the front and the back from being connected. But there isn't. There's a corridor of some kind.
Well, there would. And there's no design or plan for it. It's open space right now. So
Oh, I see.
We'll have to have this to both front and
Okay. All right. And with the proximity of the hospital, do you imagine persons in a wheelchair or on crutches or a walker would be coming from the hospital to the medical office building, not not by car? I mean, it's hard for me to imagine that that would actually occur.
I would agree. It's probably the ambulatory or they're going to if they're going from the office or my building to the hospital, or if they're coming from the hospital to mine, they're probably going to be in a car or being driven by somebody. It's a it's a tough walk for somebody, especially the condition of Oak Street at this point.
Yeah. And and because there's no sidewalk to take a person to rear. I mean, many of the many of the to take a person to rear. No, the sidewalk on Oak Street, that was a condition of permanent that will be completed. Correct?
I'm in discussions with the town right now, and which is, as you know, a challenge to get people together to get an answer. But they don't know the location of the street or the elevation of the street. They have issues with the 7-Eleven traffic light. They have issues with the crossing gate of the MBTA on where the location of the sidewalk will be, where curbing will be. So I have a proposal to them, and Tom Ryder seemed to be in agreement, but I haven't heard back for any finals on it, that I would put down an asphalt temporary paving for 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 the time being until the town can deal with all the issues they have with that short section of Oak Street. There you can't put curbing down because it'll be stuck right in the middle of the road, and people are going to drive right into it. The sidewalks don't meet on either side of my property, do not meet the town specs. There's no way for me to match this up perfectly without even knowing where we don't even know where to put it. So that's being that's a challenge. And I've been trying to deal with this for for some time now. But as we all know, with current health conditions, it's hard to get people together to to come up with a conclusion on things. So I'm hoping it's going to be resolved this week.
But Mr. You're not asking or still anticipated. And
I'm having a lot of trouble hearing Jean clearly.
I'm trouble with Jean's audio as well. There's a reverberation coming in. Jean?
Oh.
Jean, it's like it's it's gotten to be almost impossible to understand you. This is Alex. Clay, if you can hear me, is there anything that Jean could try? Oh, he just texted me because we were texting that he doesn't have an immediate fix idea. I'm not sure what the best strategy is.
Best strategy for her to log off and log back in?
Right. I suppose it's worth a try.
Twenty seconds, excuse me.
If that doesn't work, Lee, I'm wondering if the vice chair should take over the meeting because it got so bad that I, for one, couldn't understand her. So and then I was thinking, if that doesn't work, maybe I could do a troubleshoot, you know, offline, off the meeting some other time. But let's see.
All right, I'm back.
Yay.
Audio good. Oh, thank you. I'm so glad it is.
All right.
I'm especially happy, Jean, because in your absence, a suggestion was made that I take over the meeting. And I'm happy that you're back.
Good, good. So let's let's just refocus then on the changes that we are being asked to make at this time to the plan, to the approved plan. One is the relocation of the transformer. The other is a different location for a utility pole that in the different locations right near the transformer. And the other is to approve the change from 13 spaces to 14 spaces at the rear and the elimination of the sidewalk that previously connected the front to the rear so that a person could, I guess, get from the parking area in the rear to the front door. And we're told that that is really not practically necessary. So does anybody and we'll leave the handicapped ramp to deal with separately by by a separate vote. So are there any further questions or comments on those requested changes?
So I'm ready to make a motion if you wish, Madam Chair.
Yes, I think we're going to need two motions. One, to indicate that these are we do consider these de minimis changes, not requiring a notice and hearing, and then to approve the changes themselves.
Right. So let's do them separately then. So first, I I move that we consider the movement of the transformer, the the installation of a utility pole, and 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 the increase of the above-ground parking spaces from 13 to 14. And lastly, the removal of the sidewalk in the back of the building as de minimis changes.
And may I suggest one change to your list of the changes? I believe it's the sidewalk on the side of the building that's being eliminated.
It's both the rear and the side. That's correct.
I think the is.
In the rear, there was a sidewalk that was in front of those parking spaces. There were three parking spaces that
Yes. I thought I saw that that was still included on the plan. Is it not?
That is included. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but that is included in that is that's built.
Oh.
Yeah.
On the side of the building.
Yeah.
The wall of the sidewalk on the side of the building.
So with that change in in the motion, do I have a second?
I second it. I second the motion.
All right, then. The motion was seconded by Mr. Jacobs. So now I will call the role to see if that motion is approved. Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
And Mr. Albert?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that those changes are approved unanimously. And then we also had the request with regard to the possible elimination. And so
If I if I might, the motion was just to treat it as as the minimum change. I need to make a second motion. I need to make a second motion.
Oh, excuse me, thank you very much.
We approve the changes of the relocation of the transformer as shown on the, on the, on the as-built plan, that we approve the installation of the utility pole as shown on the as-built plan, and that we approve the removal of the sidewalk on the side of the building and the addition of a fourteenth parking space in the above-ground area in the rear of the building.
Okay, and motion was made by Mr. Alpert and seconded by Mr. Jacobs. All in favor, Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that is approved unanimously. And so the handicapped ramp perhaps doesn't really require a vote so much as just wrapping up our discussion of it. Because I, the suggestion was made by Mr. Alpert that inquiry would be made of the building inspector first. And then, once that is resolved, that this change can be made and we've got, you know, the building inspector assuring us that the change can be made without any concern, that the building code, Mr. Jodley and Mr. Genta will come back before us. Now, that's, that could be, can be treated that way. Alternatively, it could be voted as approved, provided that the building inspector agrees that it is no, there's no violation presented of the building code or the handicapped access code. So which way, Lee Newman wishes to speak?
I think one question is whether or not you want to see a landscaping plan. If that's eliminated, you want to see the landscaping plan and have design review board look at it before you actually approve that installation?
Yeah, I would. Is every, so, so what we're saying is, you know, get, get some assurance from the building inspector, come back with the plan that shows what it will look like and then we, sounds like we'll treat it as de minimis change and go ahead with it.
Sounds good to me, Madam Chair.
All right, so that's the direction of the board on that issue. So then, then the issue next to be considered is how will we treat the request for authorization to, to issue a temporary occupancy permit? I understand from what Ms., excuse me, Mr. Genta, did we stop, did we stop your presentation before we got to that?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So go ahead and say what you want to say about that.
All right, so this is, this is simple. Basically, Michael has residential tenant for the spot, for one of the spots upstairs, you know, on the second floor. And so with the, you know, this, both this time of year and current situation, it's important to try and get that tenant in as close to their targeted start time as possible.
Absolutely.
So, so we've, so we've asked for a partial certificate of occupancy for the residential units only, not for the commercial space at all. We'll leave that for later. So basically, we're asking for just a temporary on the residential so we can get the tenants in as soon as everything is done and sort of signed off with, you know, the finalized builds and the building department.
A partial or a temporary?
Well, technically, it's both. It's a partial temporary.
So we, we are still, I think, in this case, I think what they're looking for is the approval that George has indicated. We are still, I haven't seen, we are still waiting for the as-built plan. Maybe you prepared it, I think last time I just saw a plot plan. The as-built landscaping plan, an estimate on your end of the unfinished work items, an inspection by engineering to document that what you indicate is done, is done. And some, I think, sign off from Dave that the garage and the elevators are available for occupancy, and then a certification from the architect. So I think those are the pieces that are missing. So maybe the authorization from the board should be that when I have those components done, as I've described them, that I am free after I have received monies to guarantee the unfinished items, to issue the temporary occupancy permit. And how long do you need it for?
Michael?
Well, I'm not sure how Dave is going to rule on this because I have to pull a separate permit for any and all of the commercial space. As they come in, I don't have tenants right now. I had people lined up in the spring, but with, with the COVID, the deals have been tabled at this point. So I don't know under current conditions when the building will be fully occupied. As far as, I have to have all the life services, all the building code requirements satisfied for me to have anybody in there under any circumstances. So what I don't know is whether Dave is going to do a temporary occupancy for the residential, or would he give me permanent occupancy for the residential and wait for subsequent permits to be pulled for any build outs for the commercial space?
I, I, I think he's going to treat it as a temporary. I think first of all, under the temporary, there's site work that's not done. So I think the first question is, on this temporary, even though you don't plan to do the office build out, there's site work that's not done. When do you anticipate all the site work being done? So that everything is done with the exception of your office build out? And that's really, I think, the timeline for the first temporary. So we have some assurance that the outside work's going to be completed in a timely way.
So the, the site work will be 100% before I ask, ask for any inspections from Dave. The only pending issue that's out of my control will be the sidewalk with the town, as far as what the town wants on that. Everything else, 100% done.
The landscaping included and the removal of the, of the walkway and the new landscaping that's going to be installed in its place?
Yeah, all the landscape, 95% of the landscaping is done. The only thing that's missing, we've got handwork to do, mulching and things like that. All the plants are in. The only thing that would be additional would be plantings that I put in front of the building. And I think my reputation precedes me on, on how I landscape things. I don't think anybody's going to argue too much about that. But that will be completely finished as soon as I get the okay that we're not doing the ramp. And that's the only reason I haven't done anything there. So 100%ly, absolutely 100%, we're not far from that at this point.
All right, let me see if I can summarize the exchange between Lee Newman and Mr. Jodley. It, it, it sounds like we're being asked to authorize our planning director to authorize the issuance of a building, of a temporary, excuse me, a temporary occupancy permit for the residential space. And the reason it would be temporary is that the, every single thing about the building and the site will not be completed. And the question then is the length of that temporary permit. Would that be six months? You know, a year before everything is absolutely complete?
Well, as I, as I said, everything will be finished on the outside and the inside of the building with the exception of the commercial space.
I, we don't, I don't know, I don't think we can, here in the planning board can say whether a permanent occupancy permit will be granted by the building inspector when not all of the building is complete. We just don't know. And all we're suggesting is that if we're going to authorize our planning director to approve a temporary occupancy permit, that there be, you know, some reasonable time limit on that. I mean, that's to your benefit. You don't want it to be too short. You want it to last as long as you need it.
So the.
And may, maybe, Mr. Genta, I don't know if you want to speak about this, but all we're trying to figure out is how we would word our motion to authorize the, to grant the temporary occupants, to authorize the grant of the temporary occupancy permit once certain conditions are met.
Right. I think, I think sort of paraphrasing from Michael, as far as timing, the, the onsite work left to be done will be finished in short order. The, the only item that, where there's a question of time is really the sidewalk on Oak Street. And with respect to that, it's, it's really largely a function of the engineering department and the town, what they're going to do with that. So it's hard to, to come up with a note, you know, a timeline on that. So, I mean, from what Michael's told me, I think we're talking about within 30 days, he's going to have the site, onsite work finished. So, you know, if it's a six-month temporary, for example, subject to renewals or extension, I think that would be, you know, a fair, reasonable way to handle it. Because certainly within six months, I would hope that, that we'd have some idea of what's going on with the sidewalk on Oak Street. And we'd certainly know what, how Dave Roach is going to handle the, whether he'll do a permanent for the residential, separate from the commercial, which I suspect he'll probably will do, but, but that's his decision. And, you know, until he actually makes the decision, we don't know for sure. But six months, I think, is a reasonable period of time to start with.
All right, and Lee, you had mentioned certain things that you would be wanting to be satisfied on before you would authorize the issuance of this temporary occupancy permit.
Yes, for the six-month timeline. I mean, I'm expecting that we're going to have an as-built plan in accordance with what the decision requires, a site plan, the landscaping plan. We're going to have the appropriate certifications from the civil engineer and the landscape architect. We're going to have the affidavit from the architect and the space, I think, inside the building as I've described, that has been done. And in the event that we don't have it and Michael wants to go forward and occupy, then I want the flexibility to issue a temporary, perhaps for a shorter period of time, so he can get the thing occupied and yet we can still move forward and we can wait for those additional pieces to come in in the event that things don't quite work out over this 30-day timeline. So I want to make sure he's got the flex, I got the flexibility to deal with unexpected items that may happen. So if he gets everything done, it's perfect, fine, we'll do it for six months. If he doesn't get everything done, then there's some flexibility so that we can do a shorter timeline while we await some components to come in that maybe weren't quite right.
Thank, thank you, Lee.
Um, I don't know, do, do other, Paul, Paul respond? I'm not having, I'm having a little trouble understanding this. Six months and then a shorter timeline. Well, Mr. Alpert?
I have a question because one of the conditions that I thought I heard Lee Newman mention is the deposit of some funds.
Yeah, in the event that he doesn't finish, if for sample, something happens and he doesn't get everything done.
Do we, do we need to, do we need to approve a specific dollar amount as part of our motion tonight?
No, I think what you'd need to do is to authorize me to get an estimate from the developer on the cost, have it reviewed by engineering, and we attach a 1.35% surplus on top of that. And then I receive that surety before I actually issue the temporary.
Okay. I don't know how any of us is going to remember all, all of this in order to.
I know, in order to compose a motion. Lee, let me just say, you, you said what you'd be looking for is the as-built plan, both the site plan and the landscaping, the proper certification from the engineer and the architect, the, a separate certification from the architect.
If I may, Madam Chair, I believe that what Ms. Newman was reciting were the requirements that are already in our permit as to what is required for the issuance of the occupancy permit. I think we can short-circuit it by stating that she may, the, the planning director may issue the temporary permit for, for up to six months upon, upon her satisfaction that the requirements set forth in the special permit have, have been fulfilled. I think I just made that motion.
That is perfect.
All right, that is the motion. And fine, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so Mr. Jacobs seconds the motion. And, and so I will ask if, if everyone agrees, approves this, this motion. Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Alpert?
Aye, and I just want to say that I appreciate you going in reverse alphabetical order.
I think I've said at previous meetings, I go along the screen at the photos. So, okay, so we have an aye from all four of you and the chair is aye. So that authorization is approved.
So you go on again?
Excuse me? Did somebody ask something? Or am I gone again? Am I?
No.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, all right. I, I thought somebody said something.
Yeah, I heard somebody say something, but I didn't quite get what it was.
Okay, well then we're all set. I think we are all set with this agenda item unless there is something else, Mr. Genta and Mr. Jodley.
If I could just say something for a minute. First, I want to thank all the board members for helping me get through this. I also especially want to thank Lee Newman and all her work with both, making it possible to do the underground parking, to make this building possible. I want to thank you all. You've all been just very, just great to work with and very gracious, and I appreciate it very much.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we like this project and we hope there'll be more projects like this that introduce some housing, a combination of housing and commercial in our downtown. We had a vision of that for many years, and this is one of the few projects that's bringing that vision forth.
Right, I'm glad to be part of it.
All right then, then we'll move on to the next part of, the next item on our agenda, which is the presentation for the special town meeting. And Adam Block, do you wish to speak to that? To how, you know, how it's progressing, the presentation? And perhaps Lee Newman also would want to, would want to speak to what else we might need to do or, or prepare for?
Sure. I, I've sent, I sent you all a copy of an early draft of some, of the outline and the detail of the presentation itself without any of the actual slides. I have subsequently received comments, I think, from everybody except, except Marty. I, and at this point, I'm going to rebuild the presentation and probably do that tomorrow, depending on the, I think I, I would definitely do it tomorrow. I, I, in terms of an outline, I think I'm going to actually make it a little bit more concise. There seems to be some consensus. The real question is how we handle, I think, two philosophical issues. One is the issue of while we are zoning one spot, this is not spot zoning, do we address that at the outset? Or do we, or do we not open that question up? I think the consensus is, let's not address that upfront and instead deal with it if it comes up on the town floor at town meeting or otherwise in a question, which I'm now fully comfortable addressing. And then the second issue was the issue of whether the origination. whether the origination of a zoning article as coming from a developer is, you know, somehow taints the process or the project or the zoning. And I included both of those items in my initial draft. But I think, having spoken to a number of people, that these are two items we instead wish to address on the floor if they come up and not to bring them up, I guess unnecessarily. So with that, I need to restructure the outline and focus in on I think Ted said it best in a conversation I had with him of we have to expect that some people are going to if this thing drones on forever, we're going to lose people. You know, this being a medium now of video and it's not live on the floor that we got to capture their attention with the most salient points in the first three or four minutes. Anything else we can get in after that, we're lucky. So I think I intend to focus on what we're doing, why we're doing it. I don't think I wanted to discuss with you, but I don't think I intend, for instance, to deal with the detail of the floor area ratio or the setbacks on the fourth floor for two reasons. One, it's addressed in the narrative description following the articles themselves. And secondarily, it's also spelled out in the, you know, in the article itself. So on that basis, I was going to revise my outline and revise the language. And then I would, you know, resubmit it. I can submit it to one or two of you. I can submit it to all of you. Lee, I don't know if I don't know if I've had your comments. I certainly, you know, would love them and would welcome them.
I haven't gotten into you. I'll get those to you tomorrow.
Okay, I I know, Lee, you and I had a separate conversation and, you know, there is another philosophical, you know, question about to what extent do we deal with, you know, explain the detail of every measure in the zoning. And it seems like the consensus is now that given the new framework that we're dealing with, it's best to just hit the salient points and let the, you know, the detail lives elsewhere and people have the responsibility to go and look it up. And if they have questions in advance, they should ask. But otherwise, it's it's so it seems to be fairly immaterial, those details. I mean.
That's fine. I think I think it's a balancing act and there's just, you know, been different approaches that have been taken and both of them have been successful. And so I think I think I told you, you need you need to speak with the rest of the board. They have they have ideas about that. And I wasn't wedded to once, you know, one option or the other.
Right. Well, I have a couple of comments and questions, but I'd like to hear from other board members first. If they have any response they want to bring up at this meeting, you know, just go through the board. Mr. Owens.
I have no comments at the moment. I gave my feedback to Adam and I'm perfectly willing to look at the next draft. I was the one who said to him, what is very unusual about the way town meeting is working is that you don't have a captive audience. That the team member, the town meeting members have the option of listening to the videotape or not. And they have the option of not listening to the whole 15 minutes. They can listen to five minutes and go, all right, I'm tired of this and move on. So that's why I suggested to Adam that he try to put the salient features, which are, you know, the planning board supports this and why in the first few minutes before we lose everybody. And just refer, instead of going through the technical details, the way you might in person, just refer everybody to the description in the warrant, which is pretty good and very detailed. And I encourage people to read that. So I'm happy to read Adam's next draft if he wants to send it to me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Mr. Albert, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I also sent sent Adam my comments and and I I agree with Ted whole wholeheartedly. He may be shocked to hear me say that, but I agree with Ted wholeheartedly. The only comment that I didn't make before Adam is that when you tell people that the the planning board supports this, I just throw in the word unanimously.
Okay.
Because town meeting members like to hear that if it's true. Or if it's not true, they like to know why they 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 may question why it wasn't unanimous. So I think when we have a unanimous vote, it's important to tell them we've had a unanimous vote.
That's good feedback. Thank you.
Good point. And Mr. Jacobs.
Yeah, I I also would happily look at your next draft, Adam. I I actually do have comments on your comments. I was going to get them to you tomorrow, but I'll wait till you give me your next draft. On you two principles, I would at least at least de-emphasize the spot zoning. I certainly wouldn't make it the first thing you will you deal with. And I might just not deal with it at all in your presentation, be prepared to respond. As to the second, though, the issue of how do you deal with the fact that you got a developer who came up with this idea and is pushing the idea? And isn't that a potential taint? It's the same exact issue. This happened on the transit oriented site next to Roach Brothers down on Chestnut Street. And you and I spoke about it, Adam. I I wouldn't faint from dealing with that. That one I would deal with in my presentation, although I freely admit I'm I don't have the savvy on presentations before a town meeting that others have. And I don't think I have the sense of what works best. But to me, some people will not like that. Some people will think that that is a problem. I think it's not a problem. I don't think it's relevant. I told you that. I think what's what's relevant is are we convinced that the project that will result from these zoning changes is good for the town? That's the key. And I think we're convinced that it will be. And the only other thing I would say is just be careful in your presentation to talk about what we're doing as zoning changes that would allow the project.
Right.
It's easy to conflate the two in a way that some people might not like.
In other words, that one necess that one one requires the other, but it almost sounds like if you're giving the zoning, you're necessarily giving the project and they're separate.
They're separate and the project will be subject to special permit requirements. So it's important to make that distinction all the way through.
Everybody, everyone has given the same comment that you just raised on that.
Good.
If I I'll make a couple of comments, very similar to what others have said. I don't think we need to bring up the idea that some might consider this spot zoning and it's really not. I was kind of actually, I thought, well, I guess I guess that's all right to talk about that when I read the draft. But but it's not the kind of thing we normally bring up. It's it. It very often does happen that a project comes before us that involves only one site and that requires some rezoning. We were just dealing with the property at 1517 Oak Street, where there was a zoning change required to accommodate that project. And if so, but I think and just be prepared, and I think Adam is prepared in response to questions that might come up from the public to answer that question. But I don't think it needs to be part of the presentation. I agree with others who have said that. And I actually, I tend to think that this idea of developer taints like a project that came to us from a developer that we need to talk about that in the presentation. I'm inclined to think we really don't need to talk about that. But but only talk about it in the sense that this project has been through hearings. It's been reviewed by, I know it's I know already just from the warrant that it's I've got the approval of the finance committee. I don't know that the select board has voted on it yet. Have they?
I believe I believe they have and they've they've supported it.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
To mention that, you know, these other boards have found it to be something that they believe to be in the public interest without without suggesting that there's really anything wrong with with bringing forward a project that involves either one site or initiated by a developer. So and then the other thing, though, you're going to show the architect sketches and so forth. I think it is worth at least verbalizing that the fourth story will be set back so that it with the idea that it won't be it won't be visible from the street and and then show what you mean by just showing the photo. I don't think that's excessive detail myself.
I I I think that's an excellent point. I agree. Others that have given some additional comments as well have called that out. And I I certainly intend to show the renderings of the fourth floor, both in terms of the overall layout and then in terms of a rendering of from various so people can see what it looks like now and what it would look like some from the same location with the fourth floor added. And as part of that, it does make sense to identify that it's a zero setback at the train. And it's set back so many feet, both from Highland and West, so that to, you know, to mitigate any kind of aesthetic impact at the street level.
Yeah, just a short sentence along those lines. And then I know when you sent it around, you asked about mentioning the number of affordable housing units. I do think in your presentation, it's good to mention that a certain number of the independent living units will be affordable. I think that's something that people are interested in. There's a sort of a group that's formed recently in our town that is focused on affordable housing. And some of the people in that group are town meeting members, and I feel certain there'd be some interest in that issue. So it's worth addressing it right up front.
I agree.
So that's all. That's all I had to say about the presentation. Oh, the question, though, there was a thought that somebody who was on the developers team might use a certain amount of our 15 minutes. Is that going to happen or is that not going to happen?
Evans, do you want to speak to that? My my thought was that there was a member of the public who is a town meeting member from Needham who also worked for the developer who was going to be prepared to speak. But that the latest was perhaps that's not necessary.
Do you have any? So the question was asked of Evans Huber, who's a participant in this meeting. Mr. Huber.
Thank you. Are you referring to Adam? Are you referring to Margaret Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure whether she had been planning to use a portion of or was going to ask if she could use a portion of your time slot or not. I'm wondering whether the board has a view as to whether it's unseemly for a town meeting member to be advocating this.
I think I Lee asked the question from the town moderator who actually raised, I think, some interesting points about this. And that tech and how technically the format of this is a little different than the format of a traditional town meeting. Certainly, they can be recognized. They would not be recognized as a part of our 15 minutes necessarily. I don't intend to speak for 15 minutes. I don't know. I I can't remember the detail of where that if it was a member of the public, where it would be housed.
I thought it was housed. I thought it was housed within our 15 minutes.
So I personally.
But the person had to be a resident of the town, so you didn't have the whole issue of having to recognize them through a formal vote. So they were able to do a tape ahead of the meeting because they were a town resident. But it was it needed to be allocated within our 15 minutes was how I understood his instruction.
My my understanding is that Margaret Murphy was planning to put together a taped presentation. It's I I'm not clear on this distinction about whether it's, you know, when in the proceedings that that is going to be played. I didn't know whether that was something that was just supposed to be available to the public in case they wanted to view it or whether it's actually going to be presented during the meeting. So.
It's not presented at the meeting. There are no presentations at the meeting. Everything for the meeting is being taped in advance and town meeting members have access to it, which in which in a way changes how the rules have to be applied. And so the town moderator has essentially said that certain people are recognized to speak on an article if they're residents. And so for the planning board's article, I think this presentation had to come out of the 15 minutes. I see Ted has his hand up.
Yes, Ted, Mr. Owens.
Yeah, I I I would argue against having Margaret speak if she is on the payroll of the developer and also a town meeting member. I think that just clouds the issue we were just talking about. We do not wish to be seen as the tool of the developer. This is entirely our article. It's not like the Children's Hospital where it was a citizens petition. It's our article. We're sponsoring it. We're presenting it. And I would not be inclined to give any of our 15 minutes to any representative of the developer.
Yes, Adam, Mr. Block.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, I note that additional participants since the beginning of the meeting are Ted Doyle and Lee Bloom from the from the developer. And and I understand if they're welcome, Madam Chair, if you recognize them to say anything otherwise, but I understand actually now perhaps Ms. Evans, that that she in fact is no, she no longer intends to speak.
Okay. That 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 solves Ted's problem or his concern.
So.
All right. So it sounds like Adam Block is going to complete his presentation tomorrow and have it filmed and in that sense, we'll be all ready for town meeting. So unless you have something else to to put before us, Adam, I'd like to ask our planning director, Lee Newman, about the arrangements for town meeting. Couple of things, we have to arrange for us to have a brief pre-meeting that is a posted meeting and we have to talk about the arrangements for that. And also, I wanted to find out if we're going to be provided with a place to sit together as a board at the town meeting.
Okay, so I participated in a logistics meeting with the town manager and some other representatives of the town this afternoon. And we and the the plan is, which is going to be reviewed by Michael Fee, improved by Michael Fee. But the tentative plan is that the planning board will sit. That there are not, there's not going to be a table for the planning board to sit at. The finance committee will be at a table, the selectman will be at a table because they're going to be at that table long term. And they didn't want to have a table situation where boards were turning over and the seats had to be cleaned and there were sanitation issues. So essentially, what the the plan is, is to have the planning board actually sit in what would be the first row of the seats at town meeting. They're going to make a distinction between planning board members that are town meeting members and that are not town meeting members. I think, Marty, you're the only non-town meeting member. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so you will be sitting at the aisle and there'll be a special little note on your chair that indicates you're a non-town meeting member so that you can't vote when issues come up. And and the other boards are going to be seated behind you. I think that the CPC is going to be seated behind you. And I think that there was one other board that was going to be seated over there. And so the plan is also, I think, that we'll have a meeting, a post a meeting for prior to town meeting. So that in case there are any changes that need to be made or voted on at town meeting, there's been a meeting, it's been held, it's been continued to allow you to do that. So that's essentially what the protocol is. I will be getting a final floor plan. Which will show you exactly where you're going to sit. If any questions surface for the developer that you want the developer to respond to, there's a specific area where the developer should be in, in kind of waiting and I can show you, I can put that on the map so they'll know where they should convene. In the event that you've, you know, they, it's appropriate for them to answer a question and they're able to easily come up to the mic and answer a question. There's, there's an area where they should be, where they should be located.
Just, uh, just an interesting question. I, would we recommend that Evans, Evans, you're no, you're, are you resident of Needham?
No, I'm not.
So I wonder if, I think Roy, your partner is.
Yes, Roy's a town meeting member.
And he's also a town meeting member. I don't know if optically it's better for one or the other to be able to respond to any questions on the floor should they come up and need to be directed to the developer or?
Well, I've, I've spoken to my client about this. Because I have, you know, I'm uncomfortable attending this meeting in person. So my client and I are going to be in communication and I, I'll be able to watch the, the proceedings remotely. But certainly there will be some people on behalf of the developer there to answer questions in person. I think Roy, I think Roy feels that, you know, for the same kinds of concerns that Ted was just expressing, that Roy does not want to be in a position of having to answer questions or explain things or advocate for it.
Because of it being a town meeting.
Because he's a town meeting member and he doesn't think that's an appropriate role for a town meeting member.
So, but there will be members of the development team present. And will they need, now at the town meeting, it shouldn't be a problem to have the moderator, as the moderator often does, to ask the town meeting members to approve, to have a person speak who was not a resident of the town, right, Lee?
That's correct. And also I think, I think you're probably going to want to have a motion presented to have the articles, um, you know, presented collectively, you know, as one and then voted on separately. And so, but those are motions that could be made at town meeting.
All right, well, we.
And just, just, just on this point, Lee Bloom and Ted Doyle from the developer will be at town meeting. So if we need to guess, you know, direct any questions for them to answer specifically. And the moderator allows, uh, and town meeting votes to approve that, then, you know, they can obviously be recognized and address any question. Ted?
Ted?
I, I just want to repeat what I just said. We just a minute ago talked about the difference between the zoning change and the project. I think referring anything to do with the zoning change to the developer in town meeting would be a sign of weakness and it would be a mistake. And I don't think we should do that. I don't think it would be beneficial. If there's a question asked that you don't feel that you can answer, then you can consult with them, you know, via text or whatever. But I would never ask them to answer a question on behalf of the planning board in this circumstance.
I agree with that.
Okay, and if, now, Adam, you, you're the one who is doing the presentation for the planning board, of course, in the, doing the video presentation. But also at town meeting, do you feel prepared to answer questions with regard to the article? That may come up on, by town meeting members? And of course, Lee, you'll be there to help with.
I, I don't feel comfortable being at town meeting. So my plan, my plan is to watch town meeting from home and to be available by text and by phone.
I see.
I may be, I may be in that same position.
Who said that? Marty, okay. But, um, all right, let me, let me find out if we actually would have a quorum of town meeting members physically there. Ted, will you be there?
Yes, I will be there.
And Paul Alpert, will you be there?
I will be there with bells on.
Yeah, and I, and I will be there. So.
And Adam will be there.
And so to answer your question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I'm comfortable.
Right, of course.
I'm, I'm comfortable with, with answering questions, particularly on some of these items that we've addressed. If there is a question that comes up that I'm not comfortable addressing immediately and off the top of my head, then, you know, I'd ask for a moment and I would just confer with my colleagues. You know, there, and if we need to get further guidance from Lee on the phone or from the developer, uh, then, you know, we have the opportunity to do that. And then I'd stand up and once we have a consensus on a response, respond. But I, I do see Ted's point about, you know, it's, this is a distinction between a bylaw, which is entirely the jurisdiction only of the planning board, subject to approval by town meeting versus the project, which would come about only after the bylaws approved. As a result of an application that goes through the, the planning board. So that makes sense to me. I understand and agree with Ted on that.
Okay, and we do continue this meeting that we have just before the town meeting.
Yes.
So that, that enables our consultation. And that's, that's particularly important if a, a motion is offered to amend the article. And we want to respond to that and say whether we support it or not.
Right.
I'm, I'm hoping and I'm not expecting any amendments, but you know, it can always happen.
My, my question on that is, are we all comfortable with the four of us constituting a quorum of the planning board for that? Or is it permissible to have Marty available by telephone? So that if we need to, um, if, if we need to discuss and take a vote, Marty can participate.
Well, under the, under the governor's order that we're meeting under today, it would seem that that is permissible.
But town meeting is not a Zoom meeting.
And exactly.
No, but, but Zoom is.
Why don't we, why don't I, why don't I, we find out what the law is on that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think every such meeting has to be a Zoom meeting, from what I recall.
Yeah, you could do, you could do conference calls, I think.
Yeah.
You were able to do a conference call, but, but then you had to basically, I think, you know, maybe tape it or post it later. So.
So.
Would you, would you want to participate by phone or do you just want to watch it on town meeting and yell at us afterwards if we do something you don't like?
No, I'll be watching it on TV and I'll, and I'll be, I'll be able on my phone.
Um, all right then. We, we will have our cell phones with us. We could, it's hard to huddle, I must say. But we could put a phone on speaker and have Marty speak and so that we can hear Marty, I expect. Lee, what, what arrangements should we make for a pre-meeting? I think the last time we had a Zoom meeting, um, not too long before the, the town meeting, the outdoor town meeting. This is on a Sunday at 1:00 PM, is that right? I think it is 1:00 PM, the, the, the town meeting. Is that what you remember too, Lee?
Yes, it's at 1:00. I think probably you're going to want to be there maybe 45 minutes ahead of time. Or half hour ahead of time.
Half hour ahead of time. So when would we then meet, have a Zoom meeting?
I would take 11:30.
Okay.
Because I would, I would have to have the Zoom meeting from home.
Right.
We'd have an internet connection.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd all have to have a Zoom meeting from home.
And then we all.
You can do it from your cellphone. You can do Zoom through, through, from your cellphone.
Yeah.
And I've done it. My problem with doing it is that I've got a fairly old iPhone 7 and I find that my battery gets weak very quickly when I'm doing a Zoom meeting on a cellphone if, if it's not plugged in.
Okay, so do you want me to, well, you want to plan on a Zoom meeting at 11:30 on that Sunday and we can post it that way?
Yeah, why don't we do 11:30? Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to just walk there. So, um, up, up to the meeting from my house. So it won't take me long, really. Won't even have to park.
Maybe I'll just spend the night at your place, Jean, so that.
Oh, yeah, we'll come over together. All right then. So that's it. You'll, you'll post that.
Yeah, I will post that.
And we'll get the Zoom notices we usually do.
And I'll check that, I'll check the process on Marty participating by vote remotely.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, all right. So I think we are all set with that agenda item of our special.
Can I ask, can I ask a question on the affordable housing component of this? Because I, I did share with you, I think, an email that I got from an Emily Cooper, who I understand is a town meeting member, but I think also works for one of the state agencies that deal with affordable housing. Who basically raised the question about the affordability of the unit, you know, a concern about it being available to people at 80% of area median and not at 50% or below. I mean, the developer's choice to use that option in the zoning. And then also raised the question about whether, whether or not, although it's not done in zoning, whether or not through the special permit process, the planning board wanted to consider some provisions that would assure affordability of the assisted living units for those people that received occupancy who may go through all of their monies and find themselves in a situation where they're going to be displaced. I think there are, there, this, this particular, from what she told me, that this particular developer that we're dealing with has other projects where there have been commitments made to assure that people who reach that circumstance in assisted living are allowed to stay in their units because they're able to tap into some mass health programs that provide subsidies, at least in terms of the services that are provided. And then the developer in a sense is, is accepting a lower rent level dependent upon what the person's actual income is. So, I mean, there are questions, there, there were, there were those two questions that were raised by Emily Cooper and she was going to provide me with some additional information from the state on whether or not Plenty Board, I guess, should be looking at trying to get the developer to think about taking advantage perhaps of the 50% option that we have in our zoning. I think they're taking, they're taking advantage of the 80% area median income. And whether or not the Plenty Board wants to have some kind of conversation, maybe at the special permit stage, is to whether or not there's going to be some provision for people in assisted living who run out of funds, being able to stay in their units and not be displaced because those kinds of accommodations have been made elsewhere.
Um, I, I think of Ted Owens, our member, as somebody who either has that experience or, or knows people through his work who do. And when it comes time for the special permit, could perhaps give us some advice about the feasibility of what we might have in mind. But I think right now, the issue is, is there anything in the zoning that we're going to be voting on that would be, preclude us from having, from having the ability to ask for such conditions in the special permit? Are we tied in to anything? Uh, you mentioned 80% or 50%.
But the zoning has two options, you know, on the affordable side. It says, you know, 80% of area median income or you can do the 50% where you're providing, I think, really probably less affordable units because you're using the 50% provision, but you're unable to make some units available to people at 100% of area median income. So it's a kind of a combination approach of a, of really low income and then slightly higher was one of the options and the other option was the 80%. So the question was being raised, it might get raised at town meeting about the degree of affordability that's being provided for the independent living units and, and is it deep enough? And so.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if those questions are asked. I, I agree. We have to be prepared.
He provides, I think, for that flexibility to, you know, go down to those lower levels, even though this particular developer, from the conversations we've had with them, have indicated that they're looking at the 80% option.
Okay, as long as the zoning provides the flexibility and we could negotiate that later in, in special permit as conditions, then I don't know that it means we need to be worried about making an amendment to the zoning. That's the one thing I would really want to avoid at this stage.
No, I don't think, I don't think that's necessary, but I think maybe when Adam's presenting it, it shouldn't be necessarily, we're going to get this many units. You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's, I, I think.
That's, that's the 80% model. That's not the other model.
I think, and there's, and there are a couple of different distinctions. One is with respect to the independent living units and the second is with respect to assisted living. And I, and my read of 3.15.6 of, of this proposed Article 6, there, there is flexibility in a number of different areas for the, uh, for the planning board through its own process, an approval process to talk about those things. And yet, um, I would, I mean, I, this speaks to how we want to address it specifically. In, I think what I would intend to say is, uh, at town, in my presentation, is that the current proposal on affordable housing is based on the 80% rule to achieve a 12 and a half percent number of units, which is a goal of the, of the town itself. And that, and yet, that it's not determinative through the zoning and that there is discretion in the zoning in the public process, at the, uh, through the special permit process and elsewhere to further examine and make additional concessions with the, with the developer at that time. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, and it, when you talk of further concessions, particularly if you're referring to what's already provided as an alternative in the zoning, that is a lesser percentage of units at a lower percentage of income as a cap. But as far as other options such as assuring that the, that the project will accept people who are on Medicaid if their assets and income run low, for example. That would be a question of whether we, you know, can seek that through the special permit process.
I think, I think what Emily was talking about was not accepting people initially who were in that situation. But if you had somebody that went into an assisted living unit and was living there for like three or four years and they found their assets depleted, that there would be, you know, some kind of an arrangement that would allow Medicaid to kind of kick in and enable them to stay there for the rest of their life. So that's, I think there are a number of developments, as I understand it, that provide that kind of accommodation.
Well then, I'm just concerned about not getting too complicated for town meeting. That's all. Mr. Alpert, Paul?
Yeah, um, so it raises the question in, in my mind. Because the question, the, the question is going towards the assisted living section. And our bylaw for affordable housing, as I recall, is limited to the independent living. And my legal question, which I don't have an answer to, I haven't looked for it, is is our assisted living units even part of the housing stock for 40B purposes? Because I would think that, yeah, Lee Newman is shaking her head. I wouldn't think so. Because I would think that, yeah, Lee Newman is shaking her head. I wouldn't think so.
I, I don't think so. But there's been, there have been some questions about that. I don't think.
And so if they're not even part of the forty B housing units, then then we don't need to address it, and we shouldn't address it in our zoning bylaw. The question itself, in terms of requiring that that the assisted living facility having, having a resident who runs out of funds must be willing to accept Medicaid in order to keep the resident there is really not a question for zoning. And zoning is what's in front of them. It is an appropriate question, probably, in my mind, for the special permit process.
Yeah.
But it's not a zoning question. It's not something that that really we can put into a zoning article. I really, I really don't think.
I think you're right. I just wanted to put the issue out there because it's been raised by a town meeting member.
Yeah, but, but, but I think that's the answer. The answer is, that's not an appropriate question for changing the zoning bylaws. It is an appropriate question for the special permitting process. And, and, and planning board will be very happy to raise and discuss that issue when we have the special permit process.
And Adam wants to speak, and I'd also like him to respond to whether he's comfortable answering a question like that, pretty much as Paul Alpert has just outlined it.
So I I certainly would like to get a little more comfort on the detail and the technicality. I understand distinction between the bylaw on the one hand and the special permit process on the other. And I would certainly, if I'm not comfortable at town meeting to speak on the issue of affordable housing, then I, you know, and you, Jean, or Madam Chair, you know, Paul is, then I'm happy for one of you two to speak on that, you know, on that issue at the time. But I, I think that I can get the comfort I need. But just to respond to what Paul was mentioning, I three point fifteen point six of the of proposed Article Six addresses specific criteria for affordable housing for the independent living apartments. So on that basis, I could see this other town meeting member raising an amendment to the bylaw proposing additional affordability on the on the assisted living. I think we should be prepared for that.
So can I? I agree, we should be prepared. Excuse me, Ms. Owens?
Let me just comment because I am familiar with how this works. So first of all, the request that's being made is actually a very common practice that I'll say the more enlightened facilities do not toss people out when they run out of money. It's considered bad form. And, you know, at North Hill, for example, you can actually totally run out of your money and go on charitable care. You know, it's how we keep our 501(c)(3) tax status by providing charitable care to people who run out of money. So I think that's certainly very negotiable with with the developer. I do want to point out, though, the difference between independent living and assisted living is the related amenities. You're not renting an apartment so that the the standards for assisted living are very different than they are for independent living because it's not an apartment building, right? You're buying a package of services that's more than just rent. So that the whole issue of what's affordable changes. And so if somebody is saying, well, this dollar amount doesn't seem affordable, compared to what? What are the services that you're getting in return? So that's the, that's the thing about assisted living. So you and I can talk about that offline some more, Adam, so I can can help you understand, you know, the practicality of how it works. So, you know, I understand the question, but I think it's a question being asked by someone who may not fully understand how senior living works.
All right. Certainly, because of affordable housing now has standards, you know, affordable to persons at or below eighty percent of median income. And what does affordable mean? That rents are not more than thirty percent of the person's income. That's the kind of standard. But of course, if a person is living in assisted living where all kinds of services are provided, that those would, the cost of those services would exceed the thirty percent of the person's income. But the person would not be buying those services with the remaining income. So that, you know, it's just very different. Yeah. All right. Well, maybe we have to give a little bit more thought to, and Adam and Ted has said he'd further advise to figure out what answers we would give if this question is put to us at town meeting. And especially if somebody proposes to amend zoning to address this issue. It sounds like a lot of difficulties would arise. So we should be prepared to be thinking about that. All right. Is there anything further about the, tell me? Okay, then we'll move on. I guess the next thing on our agenda is minutes, and I can dispose of them pretty quickly. We have before us the revised minutes of January seventh, two thousand twenty, and July, excuse me, did I say January? July seventh, two thousand twenty, and July twenty one, two thousand twenty. I'd like to mention with regard to July seventh, there is apparently a typing error in, on page five in, under the section that says, Report from Planning Director and Board Members. The word retail is missing the L at the end. So that is the only error I saw that needs correction. So may I have a motion? If nobody else has any, anything to raise without the July seventh minutes, a motion to accept the July seventh minutes with the correction of that type typing error?
So. Second.
Okay, somebody made a motion?
Adam, Adam made the motion.
Adam made the motion. And who seconded it?
Marty.
Marty seconded. Marty Jacobs seconded it. So we still have to do a roll call. Ted Owens?
Hi.
Marty Jacobs?
Hi.
Paul Alpert?
Hi.
Adam Block?
Hi.
And the chair is aye, so those minutes are accepted with that one correction. And on the July twenty first minutes, just seek a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion was made by Adam Block and seconded by Paul Alpert. All in favor, Ted Owens?
Hi.
Martin Jacobs?
Hi.
Adam Block?
Hi.
Paul Alpert?
Hi.
And Jean McKnight is aye, so the minutes of July twenty one are accepted. So now we go to correspondence. And let's see now, it's essentially, we have no correspondence other than the planning director's report that it has some, some items. Was there a question?
Yeah, just, I have a question for Alexandra Clea, whether we can get this signed by her, finalizing them and sending to me, sending them to me as as an email attachment, and then I can, I can sign them as the vice chair on the minutes and then mail them back to her.
We have just not been having minutes signed for this period of time.
Okay.
I guess we started that before we even started leaving stuff at Marty's house. I suppose I could change the process now that we kind of have a little system. But for now, you know, what we've been doing is just, you know, from a certain date on, just haven't been signed and figured. And they're all online and everything figured that when we do start seeing each other again, you'll just have a pile to sign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Speaking of things on the back porch, I think Jean and I are the only ones who have signed the recommendation for the town warrant article.
I'll be there tomorrow. Thank you very much.
I will be there tomorrow.
Come tomorrow.
Great.
Okay, great, because I think my day in the office this week, we're sort of just doing one person at a time. I think I'll be in on Thursday, so I can pick it up then.
Great.
All five would be best, but of course, I think we just need, is it just three, Lee, technically?
Just need three technically.
Okay. But the more the merrier, for sure.
Okay, so you had a couple of things you wanted to present for discussion, and I leave it to you, which you want to do first, Mr.?
Let's, let's not keep him any later than we have to keep him. This is, I think, his client. But as I understand it, you know, Century Bank is going into the Anton cleaner space, and they're proposing to put, at least, first I was told it was going to be a ATM. Now I understand it's just going to be a window that's going to give them access to a teller inside the building. So if I have something accurate, Alan Evans, and correct me. And so the question was, how was that going to be permitted? Did the planning board view that as part of the principal use of the bank, even though the service was being provided outside the building? Or did they view that as an accessory use that would, that would then require a special permit? And so Dave Roach had approached me, and I told him I would get a read from the planning board in terms of how they wanted to process this. So I had a conversation with Jean and Paul, who both felt that it was really part of the principal use for the bank. But Paul had indicated that he felt that the entire board should have a conversation about it. So it's been added to the agenda.
Yes, Adam Block?
Adam, sure. I have a question, I guess, maybe best for Mr. Hubert. In the event that someone's pulling up and conducting a transaction at an open window, is the bank representative and the transaction itself occurring inside the building?
Yes. So if you look at the, we, we provided some drawings and schematics of the layout, the proposed layout. And if you, if you look at those, do you, do you have access to those? If you don't, I can just describe to you. But basically.
I'm looking at them now.
Okay, so if you are looking at, for example, the floor plan that shows the layout of the interior space, you see the the window is sort of adjacent to the counter. So if you walked inside the lobby of the bank, you would walk up to the counter and you would deal with the teller. That same teller could rotate ninety degrees and be facing this window that you can access from outside.
On Highland?
Yes.
Yes. So on that, on that basis, I, I agree with the chair and vice chair that we regard this as the primary use. In the future, I'm curious, in the future, if it becomes an ordinary automated teller with access from the outside, would a special permit be required?
Well, I can just tell you, before Lee answers that question, that the bank sees this as an important feature in these pandemic times, that people want to, you know, want to have the interaction with a human being, but don't necessarily want to come inside the bank. So they're not planning to turn it into an ATM.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Block, you used the word pull up. If somebody is pulling up, people will not be accessing this window by automobile. Is that right, Mr. Hubert? They will be walking up to the, to the window.
That's correct. It's not possible to access it by automobile.
Yeah. And to my, and to my way of thinking, that made a big difference in whether this was an accessory use or something that we would need to approve because it doesn't change the, you know, the traffic movement on the site.
I don't see it as an accessory use. I see it as a principal use.
I agree.
Okay, it sounds like we're all in agreement, then, that it's just something the building inspector can approve, and that doesn't need an amendment to any of the plans for this building. So that's, that's all that really is before us. Is that right, Lee Newman?
Yes, that's correct. I just wanted to be able to give Dave direction in terms of how to process it.
Okay. So we don't, we don't really need to take a vote on this. It's just.
No, I just wanted to get a sense of the board so that I knew how to proceed on this application.
All right. Well, Mr. Hubert, I'm sorry to keep you waiting so long.
No, that's okay. As it turns out, I was very interested to hear the discussion about the town meeting. So I'm glad I was here for that anyway.
Good, good. Okay, so Leah, the other thing you wanted to present was a proposed.
I'm just going to sign off, then. I assume you don't need me for anything.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presence. Leah, you were, we have a correspondence from you to us regarding two twenty five Highland Avenue. And a tenant in that building is jamboree.
Correct.
And we have certain special permit conditions with regard to the operation jamboree. And a different tenant is coming in called Expressions Enrichment. And they have slightly different hours of operation, slightly different description of the services that they provide to children and to their parents who might participate in the art classes and so forth with their child. A little, a little bit different from jamboree. And so the question is, since particularly hours of operation are slightly different, and also there would be more staff involved in the Expressions Enrichment program than were proposed to be involved with the jamboree program. So that has an impact on the number of parking spaces that are required. So it would need a further waiver of parking under our zoning bylaw requirements for parking for this type of use. So is the question, Lee, whether we can approve such changes as a minor modification?
No, the question originally was, and I, the question was whether or not they could, they were trying to get the permit transferred by arguing that it was similar enough to the other permit that a transfer would be allowed. And they've really kind of, over the course of the last, I would say, three weeks, kind of refined their proposal to try to make it fit within the jamboree envelope. But when I saw their final piece on, and I think probably the hours of operation were close. I think the similarity in terms of the services that were provided are very close. But I think the problem that they have is, is, is something that maybe is, is not something we can modify, which is the fact that they're increasing the staff, which is going to require extra parking. And this parking, this service, this use is currently operating under a parking waiver, and so it's going to need another parking waiver. And I think that probably has to happen through a formal amendment.
Does anybody else wish to comment on Lee's conclusion about this? Does anybody else wish to comment on Lee's conclusion about this?
I think she's right. I agree with her.
Mr. Alpert has his hand raised.
Yeah, um, I agree that it has to be a formal process. My, my question is whether it's really an amendment or whether they need to, to start from scratch and request a special permit. I'm not, I'm not sure that it's really that close to what jamboree is doing. You know, what, I was looking at it and you're rightly, they were, they were trying to fit within the jamboree permit in order to do it that way. And if we're going to require them to do an amendment, I think they may just want to go forward with a whole special, new special permit.
I think they probably would be better served doing that because then they can really be, I think, thoughtful about their use, their hours of operation, their staffing, and, and get done with they really need to get done.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's going to require them to be convinced to spend the money and time to do it. That's a, that's a decision for them to make.
Well.
I mean, I think pose that to them.
Is the money that much different between, between a special, a new application for a special permit and an amendment, which is still a formal proceeding that needs to be noticed?
As far as application fees, do you mean? Do you mean with regard to application fees, the town charges?
Application fees and their cost for, for legal work and I would imagine some engineering work. Well, I don't know that they need engineering work.
No, I think you probably just need, you probably just maybe need a revised floor plan if they're going to be changing the interior space. But they're going to need that for the building inspector anyway. Whether they take it to us or not.
And there was a way they are parking, they're not, not closing change their parking area.
Jean, we lost your audio again.
We're losing you again, Jeanie.
Calling in again.
Jeanie needs a new computer.
Yeah, if the schools are giving all the students iPads and Google Books, she should get a new iPad.
I think she needs to have one of her grandchildren come over and teach her what to do.
That is the solution.
All right. Maybe it was telling me I should stop talking.
I think we all agree that you need a new machine.
I thought this, this machine has been really terrific. I don't know why it's acting up tonight, but, okay. He thinks, my tech support guy here, Steve McKnight, thinks it's probably network problems. All right, so did, did we come to the conclusion that they would, well, did we say that we absolutely think they must apply for a new special permit? Or that they would be well advised to? I, I'm not clear.
My, my position is I think they would be well advised to. We think it makes more sense for them to do it. But if they want to try the other route, I'd be open to being, to allow them to try it and come in and convince us, but.
You mean a transfer or they're still, they still need the parking waiver?
Yes, transfer, new parking waiver, yes.
But the, but the parking waiver is going to trigger a special permit.
Anyway.
An amendment to the existing special permit, if that's the way they want to go with it.
I mean, they could come in and ask to have the existing permit transferred and, and, and a parking waiver. But it's, but it's, it's an amendment. It's still the same process, or they could file something totally new and clean and, and do everything under that umbrella.
So do you feel comfortable and with our response in simply going back to them and presenting that, those options to them?
I think I can present those two options, I think, but to just do a straight transfer is not going to work because it's, it's triggering a special permit.
I agree.
Adam?
I'm, I'm still learning the details of the, and the nuances of the process. I just want to be mindful that we are still smack in the middle of a pandemic. And if it's possible to work with existing regulations that can make business happen a little easier, it's probably better, I would think, for everybody, provided that they're not violating any procedure. And.
They have to, they have to reduce their staffing. I think that's the issue. If they want to reduce their staffing to two, then the parking numbers will work.
I, you know, if we can accommodate that by an amendment and it doesn't require them to go through a whole rigmarole that can take six weeks or eight weeks or 12 weeks and suddenly incur another $25,000 in expense, that I'm subject to that, not otherwise violating any existing law, that might be the most efficient solution. Again, I'm still learning, is everybody frozen or is that my computer?
No, I, I give them the option. I mean, it's their choice. The problem is, and Lee is also right about this, that it would in the end be better for them if they're willing to spend the money to start all over with a new special permit.
But I think Adam's approach doesn't work either. I mean, he want, is, if they just come in for the, if they just want the parking waiver, a parking waiver itself requires the special permit and, and the timeline. It requires a filing of the amendment. It requires the legal notice. It requires the appeal period. So I, I just don't see Adam how, if they need a parking waiver, how we do it de minimis, Lee. That's the problem.
I would just respond, I think we need to proceed with an advertised hearing. But the, the, the plans that might need to be prepared and presented by the applicant, it depends entirely on the extent of the changes, the physical changes that they're making. If they're not making any physical changes at all, they're simply making program changes and necessarily then seeking the parking waiver, all they need is a letter. So it really depends on the applicant, what they're proposing. I mean, we just dealt with changes to 1517 Oak Street as a de minimis change, but it's still required to come up with a plan to show us what the changes were that he's proposing. In this case, it might not even need a plan. But, but I don't know how we get around the idea, I mean, under our bylaw, that to seek a, just to have a program at the building that employs more people and requires a parking waiver, how we can do that without a special permit? We just have to do the special permit. That's all.
Okay, I have a direction I need. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think that takes care of our agenda. And we'll see each other again via Zoom at 11:00 on Sunday. The, whatever the date is of October the 4th or something.
11:30, is that correct?
Oh, 11:30, excuse me, 11:30, not 11:30. And then we have our next meeting the following Tuesday.
If you're interested, the ZBA acted on two of your cases. The garage case, the garage case was denied. Were a lot of people from the neighborhood who were opposed to the third car garage, but I understand there were a lot of drainage issues on the property. And in terms of what's the eating place? What's the name of that eating?
Vega?
The, the, um,
Baker's Best.
Thank you. And in terms of Baker's Best, they granted the permit for two years. It's.
A temporary permit. Good.
Yeah. I think, I think they're, they're having difficulty because the, their primary business was, you know, a catering business for corporate clients. And that business is pretty much, you know, dried up. So they're trying to look for other ways of moving the business forward with this takeout operation.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for that report. I, I was wondering what became of that. I was thinking of it today, actually, the, the, the three garage site. All right then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Jacobs made a motion to adjourn. Mr. Block made a seconded. I'll call the roll on that. Ms. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Well, Alex, good to see you.
Yes, it is.
Guys, thanks very much for your feedback, all of it, on the Planning Board presentation for Article Six and Seven.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.